Get the biggest audiences, like we're so popular, but it's wonderful to see you all. We'd like to open up the meeting for the municipal council. This is our meeting agenda. Five thirty-four Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Today we have with us councillor Shannon Ellsworth, councillor George Handley, councillor Dave Shipley, myself councillor Catrice McKay, councillor Rachel Whipple, and we also have the mayor, Michelle Kafusi. Bill and Travis are excused today. The opening invitation, the opening prayer will be by me, Catrice McKay. Heavenly Father, we are grateful to be gathered here today. We are grateful for all these wonderful citizens and fire employees that we have in the audience, and we are grateful for their service. We pray that we can consider the city as a whole and consider the citizens in it as we make the decisions that we need to make today. And we are grateful for this beautiful city we live in, and we say things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. The flags will now be posted by the Provo City Fire Department.
Will you follow me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to the fire department for that. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the items, but will be limited to ten minutes. At this time, up to fifteen minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comments on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and your city of residence. You will have two minutes to speak. Is there anyone here today who would like to do public comment? All right. We are going to move on to the employee of the month for October two thousand twenty-three. Last month, we started doing employee of the month. We will be doing that every month from now on. And this will be presented by the mayor, Michelle Kafusi, and Scott Henderson.
Thank you. A lot of things to navigate tonight. Chair McKay, Vice Chair Whipple, and members of the municipal council, I'd like to introduce someone you're already familiar with, our dedicated director of Parks and Recreation, Scott Henderson. Scott has long been an integral part of the city's efforts to provide exceptional recreational opportunities for our community, and under his leadership, the services provided by Parks and Recreation have reached new heights, even being the gold standard, which continues to enhance the well-being and happiness of Provo residents. Of course, this is a shared success that exists because of the exceptional care of our employees, and the employees have for our exceptional community. On that note, I'd like to give the floor to Scott, who will reveal our October Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for this honor to be able to talk about our employee of the month in Parks and Recreation. And at this point, I'd like to ask Ella Wolfgram to come forward and stand with us. I don't know if Ella has any idea that this was going to happen. So I've got a narrative to read about Ella's background, and then, like I always do, I'll go off on a tangent on some part of that. But Ella Wolfgram came to Provo Parks and Recreation in two thousand seventeen with a degree from BYU and quickly demonstrated a strong work ethic in park operations. Since then, Ella has distinguished herself as a peak performer at each of the various areas, tasks and assignments she has been given. When Ella takes an assignment or project, she always demonstrates ownership and focuses on outcomes rather than processes. She is respected for her competence, ability to communicate, and is quick to help coworkers when they're in a bind. Ella is, she had a short dalliance with Orem, so I felt like I needed to disclose that, but she this is where I go off on a tangent. Yeah. She came to her senses and came back to us, and we could not be happier on that. Among the many high-quality areas that Ella manages, there's no better example of her next-level impact than the downtown Center Street streetscape. She has set a positive professional tone in work, one that demonstrates respect for the many visitors and downtown business owners. The beauty and vibrant urban environment of downtown Provo is largely because of her commitment, leadership, and hard work, and we are awfully proud of our downtown in Provo, and Ella is a big part of that. Provo City has about six hundred and fifty full-time employees, and I think what Ella is, is Ella is an example of the power of one. The type of impact that one employee can have on their community by showing that extra effort and work. And I think that can be true throughout our entire organization, that even in an organization of this size, one person can really make a difference, and Ella will always be a great example of that. So we commend her for her excellent performance, and we're glad to recognize the value that such a talent brings to the continued success of Provo Parks and Recreation team. We look forward to continued excellence, because you can't quit now just because you get an award. And we just love having the example of a quality performer in our department. So congratulations, Ella, the Provo City Employee of the Month.
I said, do you want to say something? But you don't have to say, no, I don't want to say anything.
Well, let's grab a picture real quick with Ella.
Come on down and let's get a picture.
It's wonderful to get to know the different employees, so it's a pleasure to get to know you better, Ella. Okay, so last, recently, we just did the new swearing-in of some police officers, and I got to say, it was fascinating. I love learning about them, and we got high standards in Provo, so I'm excited to hear about these new firefighters. So this will be presented by Chief Hedman.
Thank you, Council. It's a happy day for us. We get to hire or swear in four of our new firefighters. Right here, they're, they've been through a recruit camp, eight weeks, and just started shift this week. So we're excited to have them and badly needed. So I'll start with Logan Lindley. He'll come up with me, Logan. Logan was born and raised in Heber Valley. He's the only boy in his family. He's a, his first he first found interest in the fire service through an EMT course he took in high school. During that course, he realized how much he loved fire and EMS. He's since received his EMT certificate through MTEC. He graduated from UVU's Recruit Candidate Academy, sometimes referred to as the RCA. He has completed several other certifications as well. Logan loved growing up in Heber City. He's given, he has been given many opportunities to appreciate the closeness and proximity to the mountains and lakes. Logan likes to camp, razor ride, ski in the mountains, and he enjoys boating and surfing on Deer Creek. He's recently started rock climbing here in the Provo Rock Canyon area. Logan likes helping others. Feels like this career will be very rewarding. He's excited to be working in Provo City, because it's the best city, and looks forward to the opportunities that will come in his future. I'd like to invite his mom, Sarah Lindley, to come up and pin his badge on. Now liked in by Aiden Scott to come up. Aiden was raised in northern Utah. He's lived an adventurous, sporty lifestyle, always looking for the next challenge of adrenaline dump. After high school, he went on an LDS mission. Aiden took an EMT course for fun and fell in love with the emergency services. For the last year and a half, Aiden has worked in the Salt Lake City area on an ambulance. He entered the fire academy to further his EMS and fire career. He's excited to be a part of Provo Fire Department and looks forward to serving the people of Provo. Aiden, we'd invite Jared Scott to come up and pin Aiden's badge on. Obviously, twin brother. Invite Ben Bingham to come up. Ben is from Texas. He moved to Utah, Provo, in two thousand twenty, with a desire to get an engineering degree. At UVU, he enjoys snowboarding as much as possible. However, his path took a turn. He discovered his passion for firefighting in an intro to firefighting class. This realization led him to a shift in his academic focus to emergency management. He's completed his EMT. In the fall of two thousand twenty-two, he became a certified Utah EMT. Ben's commitment to the fire department firefighting deepened as he graduated from the Recruit Candidate Academy at Utah Valley University in the spring. He's now marked his first step in his career as a firefighter here for Provo. He did work for a season with Utah County as a wildland firefighter over the summer. Ben is eager and ready to serve and support the community and bring his dedication, enthusiasm, and creative, positive impact. And I'd like to invite his mom, Terry Bingham, to come up and pin his badge on. And last but not least, we have Jeremy Frisbee. Come on up, Jeremy. Jeremy, his dad actually retired from Provo Fire Department two or three years ago, and so he was raised in the Provo Fire Department. He's raised in Pleasant Grove, and he has had a desire and a passion to be a firefighter since he was a kid. He's went through his EMT class in high school, wanting to start his career as soon as possible. After high school, he went on an LDS mission to San Jose, California, and right after that, attended the UVU Fire Academy. Jeremy enjoys doing triathlons, skiing, mountain biking, just about being outdoors. He has a heart, he has a passion to work for Provo Fire Department specifically, and waited until we were able to hire him. We couldn't be happier, more happy than to have these four new members of the fire department. I'd like to invite his mom, Laura Frisbee, to come up and pin his badge. Thank you again for your support of the fire department and governing this great city. And thank you for, to these fine gentlemen for joining our fire department. Have a great night.
Thank you, Chief. Not so quick. We are going to do a quick picture with the four gentlemen, and I think, I think
I need to actually get them to stand up and swear, man.
Okay, let's do it. Okay, you guys will just raise your right arm and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations. All right, we will excuse the fire. They are going to have a little celebration, so feel free to leave. And enjoy. All right. Next, an applied motion on a resolution consenting to the mayor's appointment of the chief administrative office for Provo City, as presented by the mayor, Michelle Kafusi.
Thank you. It's an exciting night for all of us. I am here tonight to announce the new chief administrative officer for the city of Provo with your advice and consent. So the the name of our new chief administrative officer is our Parks and Rec Director, Scott Henderson. As you all know, the years you've worked with him, he's been in the city twenty-two years, seven years as the Parks and Rec Director. He's, he holds this all, including myself, to a higher standard and makes this better. I wanted to just share a letter that was put together by all his peers, the other directors in the city. I wanted to just share a s- a letter that was put together by all his peers, the other directors in the city that are in full support and they're in such support of him that they wanted to sign a letter on behalf of him. So I'm just going to read this letter. And then we'll turn it back to you. Dear members of the Provo Municipal Council, in light of your important role in providing advice and consent to Mayor Kufusi and her appointment of a chief administrative officer, we respectfully provide the following statement for your consideration. You know well that as department directors, we collectively work with and oversee approximately fourteen hundred full and part-time employees of Provo City. You also know that we engage with the mayor's office and Provo City CAO on a regular basis. Additionally, each of us participated on one of the two interview panels as applicants for the CAO position were evaluated. We fully support Scott Henderson's nomination as CAO and hope you will too. As you are aware, Scott is a dynamic and trusted leader who has proven his ability to inspire his department members to achieve great things for the residents of Provo. Additionally, in several roles, including project manager for the design and construction of our new city hall and public safety building, he has proven his ability to collaborate and lead beyond his department. We express our confidence that he is truly well-prepared for this leadership opportunity and that our organization will be impacted positively by his leadership in the role of CAO. With gratitude for your demonstrated commitment to bettering Provo and then all Travis Ball, Director of Energy, Dave Decker, Director of Public Works, Jeremy Hedman, Provo Fire Chief, Troy Beebe, Provo Police Chief, Amanda Erkenbrack, Director of Customer Service, Brian Jones, Provo City Attorney, John Borget, Director of Administrative Services, Carla Gordon, Director of Library, and Bill Pepperoni, Director of Development Services. So with that, I'll turn the time to you and if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for the mayor? Okay, I don't think you have any questions, so we'll just have council discussion. Um I know I'm thrilled and I'm so excited to work with Scott even closer than we did before. And he's a man that makes things happen and he has the best energy around him. And so I'm excited for what he's going to do in this different role. This can be fantastic. Um any other counselors have any comments? Counselor Handley.
I just want to be on the uh I want to be a fanboy. I am a fanboy, so I just want to make sure I want to make that public. Uh I think very highly of Scott and I think he is an extraordinarily effective leader. Uh he is a great communicator. Uh he's fair-minded, he's level-headed, he's calm, he's smart, he does his homework, uh he's a people person. Anyway, you could go on and on with his qualifications for this job, so I think we're in very capable hands with him at this uh in this position. He's been great to work with. Uh as a city council member, uh I've enjoyed every interaction I've had with him and I've never felt anything but impressed at his high level of professionalism. So this is a great, great for the city.
All right. Ready to vote on the implied motion? Um Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
And Counselor Hope is excused, so that is unanimous with five votes. Congratulations.
I think we'll let Scott say a few remarks and then we get to marry him to the city. We'll have to swear him in and so we'll go ahead and turn the time to you Scott for a few remarks.
Well, I've been able to maintain my emotions through this process and so I'll try not to end it now, but I know everybody from my department is here for Ella and the employee of the month. I'm fully aware of that, but just understand where I come from and the respect I have for the team that I have worked with for the last twenty-two years and thank goodness, this is a transition that moves me to a different area in the city. Yet I still have these work associates and work friends that I've had for twenty-two years. I could not be more excited about working with the energetic mayor that we have and the passionate council that we have, the awesome group group of directors and I'll let you know that this letter will be in that office as long as I'm in that office and it won't be to remind them, hey, you supported me once. It will be more about I need to work every single day to earn this level of support. And then just knowing about and it comes right off of our employee of the month that the type of talent that we have in this organization and the kind of influence that great employees can have on their community is something that I will always value and it'll always be true to me and hopefully it'll be something you see in every single day I come to work. I thank you very much for your your vote of confidence and thank you very much, Mayor, for this humbling appointment.
So we'll have Heidi come up and Jill, his wife, if you'll join us.
I Scott Henderson. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, obey and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Utah. And I will discharge the duties. Of my office with fidelity. Thank you, Heidi.
We're going to grab another picture. Thanks to all the Park and Rec people that came. Scott, we're going to recognize that you've now taken your position up here. Who get to see you every council meeting? We're so excited.
Thank you, Council Chair.
All right, we are going to move on to an implied motion on a joint resolution of the Provo City Mayor Municipal Council appointing a temporary justice court judges for the Provo City Justice Court. And this will be presented by John Borget, our Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Council Chair McKay and the Honorable Counsel. As we discussed just recently in a previous council meeting uh with Judge Romney uh leaving in December, on the sixteenth of December. And also as we discussed, kind of the logistics of getting his replacement hired. There's going to be a period of time, we hopefully it's a relatively short period of time, but there's going to be a period of time where we're going to need to have temporary judges come in and fill in so we can continue to have the uh operations at the uh justice court. And so this resolution is to provide flexibility and the ability for uh us and particularly Rihanna Newtons here, if you have any questions for her as well, our just court administrator, to be able to start scheduling because we need to start scheduling now so that we're prepared in December to we can continue to to have court. With that, uh I'm happy to answer any questions or Rihanna's here if there's any questions for the council as well.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? All right, I think we're good. Any council discussion? We will call a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor Hope is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. So that is unanimous, five zero. All right, next, a presentation of the quarterly report for the fourth quarter of year two thousand twenty-three. Ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And this will be presented by John Borget, our Director of Administrative Services.
So this is kind of an opportunity to uh take a peek at fiscal twenty-three that ended on June thirtieth. We'll be back uh in December and our council meeting in December presenting our audited financial report. But this should give you a little bit of a peek and an idea of how we anticipate the numbers to come out. I would just mention for the public and for the council, uh the recorder, the quarterly report is intended to give an unaudited summary information to the reader about Provo City's revenue expenses for the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, June fiscal year twenty-three ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And the quarterly report contains financial data comparing previous year's revenues and expenses to current year's revenue expenses and also provides a five-year comparison. No data on the revenue uh and expenditures is final until the city has completed its financial audit and issues the annual report, which I talked about, will be sharing with the council in December. If you go to the next page, which is page two, uh this is a really important page. Uh it's actually one more, sorry, just one I just talked about. And I want to just talk about two things that are real significant. First of all, if you see sales tax revenue and it's highlighted there, our sales tax revenue actually came in about a million dollars under budget. We had for the statewide, uh the last three months of the uh of the fiscal year just saw some some declining, some declines. And so we actually came in under budget, but what's significant is that if you look down in investment income, uh we had uh as it is most know, interest rates rose significantly as the Fed rose rates. And so our increase in interest earnings almost offset our decrease in sales tax revenue. And so as a whole, uh as you can see on here, we were about three hundred thousand up on our revenues as a whole. And then our transfers were up about two hundred thousand. Now, I would mention that our trend the last couple of years, last several years has been revenues even higher than budgeted revenues. And so we are seeing some leveling, but but the good news is that uh we did meet our budget and actually exceeded by about five hundred thousand in revenues. I would mention that uh for fiscal twenty-four, which we're in right now, uh we have just received one month of sales tax revenue and uh I'm just going to give you a little bit of a report on that. We were, we had an increase over the previous year of about three point three one percent. And we had budgeted for an increase of four percent, so we were a little under our budget. But a little bit more concerning is the state as a whole was up one point seven nine percent. And so uh we were actually, our increase was higher than the states and that probably tended to some some timing differences. And so we're likely probably closer to back to where the state is. So I would just mention that we're watching it very closely as as the finance and also administration, we're talking about it, we're discussing it. The other concern about fiscal twenty-four is that when we budgeted for interest earnings in fiscal twenty-four, our projections were higher because we had already seen the increases in the Fed and the overall increases in rates. Where in twenty-three, it was well before that and we we didn't have that anticipation. So we won't likely have the offset in interest earnings because we already anticipated it. But I would just assure the council that we're looking at this very closely and we'll keep you informed. And the whole purpose of this quarterly report is to provide the council and administration information as soon as possible so that we can keep on top of it and be aware of it. And so uh so that's a real important page. Um I would also mention if you go to the next page.
John, Counselor Shipley has a question for you.
Just real quick, um so if we were off, let's say our projection was off by three or four percent, are we talking about about a million dollars over a calendar year? If if sales tax comes in about three or four percent lower than what we had anticipated?
Yeah, so I've, we've kind of looked at it, the projections and I think we could be anywhere between likely a million dollars off like we were last year. Or things are a little bit worse, we could be as much as two million.
So one to two without the offset of interest earnings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, there may be some other revenues that help. Um the other thing that's important for the council to be aware of too is that our fund balance is still at a really good level. Um matter of fact, I'm anticipating there's going to remain about thirty-four percent. The maximum amount the state allows for us to have is thirty-five percent. And so we are positioned well, but I would also say that we're going to be watching it and look doing what we can to to plan and and not be caught surprised by the information.
Thank you.
Okay. This next page just kind of shows the graphs for revenues. And one thing I want to mention is that last year, which is in the green on the gra- on the the revenues at the top, you can see that our revenues were up significantly. And that was one time ARPA money that came in. And so it really kind of made it look not very comparable to the others. And so that's really what what that is showing. And so overall, and then you can see that the two bars over on the right, the blue and the red, uh you see that we were slightly ahead of our budget overall and that's kind of what we talked about on the other slide. Okay, um gonna, I there's some ta- tap, so some graphs on sales tax and whatnot, we've already talked about that. But if you go to development services, which is on page five, um you can see that uh that little arrow. As we've talked a little bit earlier on the quarterly report, we did have some uh large projects and development that development revenues actually came in well above the prior year and budget. And uh that's something that we've known is happening. We don't expect to have that same increase in twenty-four. But there was a pretty strong year in twenty-four on the development services and that's shown there. Also, if you go to the next page, um you can see our justice court revenues. This is the first time since pre-COVID that we've seen some strong revenue through the justice court. And the reasoning behind that is that the state actually imposed some restrictions during COVID and well after COVID to where we were really limited in our operations. But we have got back to kind of the level of uh activity that we were having in the court prior to COVID. And so we're seeing some strong uh and that's actually a positive because we're actually able to enforce the laws and be able to have that kind of discuss interaction, which I think is good for the community and it's been good. So that's that's a good return there. Okay, um if you go to page eight, this just kind of shows the uh one more, please. There we go. They're they're highlighted kind of there on the right and I'll just mention, these are the appropriations that were approved by the council during the year. And a couple that were pretty significant I want to talk about, I should have been highlighted through there's a transfer to the general to the there's a transfer to the general, to the, basically to the airport for the property purchase on the interfund loan, that was about five hundred fifty-seven thousand. There was also some salt and overtime that related to all the snow that we had during the year and the requirement, the snow removal. And then we did, towards the end of the year, we did seven hundred fifty thousand for the breathing apparatus that the fire desperately needed. And so those were some significant appropriations that I would just touch on until it makes you aware of. If you go to the golf course, which is page ten, this was significant because I would mention a couple of things. As you remember, this last fiscal year that we were in, we had a lot of rain last fall, and the weather particularly towards mid to late fall was just very difficult for golf play. And then in the spring, we didn't really have a spring. It wasn't slightly from winter to summer. And so there was very limited ability to play during the spring, but yet when it got nice, we had a lot of business. The golf course did a great job, and we actually exceeded our budget and exceeded the prior year, even with the challenges that we're talking about here. And then the other thing is, we did, we did a transfer that we talked about during the year due to the impact that COVID hit, and we had kind of went back and needed to do a, a, a transfer to cover for that. But overall, the golf course was pretty much broke even. And so, and we were able to do a lot of wonderful things there. So I would just say that I think that's good to note as far as the golf course and how they did for the year. Then if you go to the energy, which is page thirteen, you can see that they exceeded the prior year and as well as the budget and came in with, with a solid year and was able to do some great things. And then if you go to the airport, which is the next page, you can see that significantly, things were, it's just with, with the new terminal and everything, you can just see the revenues, and those are operating revenues really just increased significantly over the prior year. And then also passed the budget. I also broke out parking, and we talked about this a little bit earlier in the work session this afternoon. But you can see that our parking alone, we budgeted for six hundred thousand, and we came in almost one point seven million. So it was a million, million dollar increase, and that's just due to the number of flights, the commercial flights, and just strong activity at the airport. I think it's important to, to note that. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Those are just kind of the, the significant things I wanted to touch on with the quarterly report. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for John? I know I called you about a bunch of questions, and I appreciate the time you took on that.
Thank you very much.
All right, sounds like you're good. Any council discussion? All right, thank you, John. We'll move on to an implied motion on a resolution approving the Utah Valley Home Consortium Home ARP Allocation Plan Amendment to the Plan of Year Two Thousand Twenty-One Annual Action Plan. And this will be presented by Melissa McNally, Community Grant Administrator.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So there are really two parts of this presentation tonight that I am asking for council approval. The first is that the Utah Valley Home Consortium would like to amend the Home ARP Allocation Plan to include funding for the acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter, and this would be limited to the population of homeless individuals who are experiencing or fleeing domestic violence, human trafficking, and stalking. So the, everything in the white is what was previously approved, and in the blue is the new, are the new proposed funding amounts. And then the second part is the approval of these organizations to perform these different services for the qualifying homeless and, and near homeless populations. The TBRA does stand for Tenant-Based Rental Assistance. And then we have supportive services. So those organizations that, that we would propose funding to are Boys and Girls Club, Building Beginnings, Community Action, Food and Care Coalition, My Story Matters, The Refuge, and the UVU Care Hub. And then if funding is approved for the Sorry, I forgot. I forgot what I was saying in the middle of what I'm saying. If funding is approved for the proposed amendment for the acquisition and development of the non-congregate shelter, again, it is limited to those people experiencing or fleeing, attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, and human trafficking. And then we would put that, that portion out for funding availability for organizations serving that population to apply for that funding, and it would be awarded at that time. And I would bring that back to council again when that happens. Do you have any questions for me on any of that?
Counselor Whipple.
Oh, no, I didn't have questions. I'm just, but I am really happy to see that we're able to do this step and that the, the placeholder worked to hold the place and that now we're able to get like a concrete facility to help people. So thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, questions for Melissa? All right, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, any council discussion? All right, we will do a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley, yes. Counselor Shipley, yes. Counselor Hoban is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple, yes. Right, that passes five zero. All right, next, a resolution indicating the intent to make an adjustment to the common boundary between Provo and Orem along two thousand south in Orem. And this is, we're doing this for a public meeting, for a public hearing, and it'll be presented by Gordon Haight and David Day, the engineers.
Yes, thank you. This I've brought to you a couple of times in work meetings, so I may be a little abbreviated. If I am, just ask questions and I'll make sure we communicate well what's happening. So there are three resolutions, and the first is two thousand south in Orem. Half the street is inside the city boundaries of Provo and half is in Orem, and it also includes a detention basin that's owned by Orem City that they maintain. And so the resolution is to have the half of the street that's in Provo, move the city boundary so the full street is in Orem. We don't, there are no Provo residents that front this street, so it's better for them to maintain, take care of, it's part of their system. And the detention basin, again, so they can do work in it, they don't have to worry about getting permits from this Provo City, it's their permit. And so staff recommends having the sixty-day public hearing that this resolution has, and then we'll come back to the city council for an approval after that, second, after that, a public hearing process is closed. Any questions?
Any questions for Gordon? Thanks, Gordon. Um, council discussion? All right, we will do a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley, yes. Counselor Shipley, yes. Counselor Hoban is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple, yes. And Counselor Ellsworth, yes. So that passes five zero. Thank you, Gordon. All right, you're here for another one. An implied motion on a resolution indicating the intent to concur with Utah County on the common boundary between Provo and Orem near the intersection of ten thirty east in Orem and twenty-two fifty north in Provo.
Yeah, so this is a boundary that Provo and Orem tried to straighten out a few years ago. Both of, both Orem and, and Provo show a common boundary, but the county does not agree with our boundary. And so we're going through this process one more time with the public hearing, with the correct documents to get the boundary concur with what Orem and Provo have agreed to before. The property currently has a lift station on it. It's owned by Orem City, and this again would make sense for them to take care of it. It's public property. And so we would recommend going into the sixty-day public hearing process, and we'll bring this back for a final vote after the sixty-day public hearing. And we'll give you any, any comments we get through the public hearing process. So we recommend approval of this.
All right. Any questions for Gordon on this one? We're opening this item for public hearing. Any council discuss, wait, public hearing. Does anyone want to make a public comment on this? Is that what you're asking?
Well, the, the, the public hearing is for sixty, it opens a public hearing timeframe.
So we don't need to open it for public, okay.
This resolution will open it, and then the, the public has sixty days to contact the city and give us their comments.
Okay, thanks, Gordon. Great. Any council discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley, yes. Counselor Hoban is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple, yes. Counselor Ellsworth, yes. Counselor Fillmore is excused. So that passes five zero.
Thank you.
One more, Gordon.
Yes.
All right, a resolution indicating the intent to adjust the common boundary between Provo and Orem to accommodate a new residential development near the intersection of University Avenue in Provo and eight hundred north in Orem. And again, this is another item we're opening up for public hearing, and Gordon Haight will be presenting.
So this one's the only one that includes private property. The other two were all public property. This is to accommodate a development that is taking place right at the Provo-Orem border in northern Provo. There's a planned development that would have housing on this property next to the Provo River. And we're working with the developer and with Orem on how to help make this community a little more integrated and, and work together in terms of being in the same city, the same school district, the same voting boundaries and so forth. And so the developer has asked, as well as Orem, to move this into Provo. And so we're starting the public, the sixty-day public hearing process with this resolution, and we recommend support of that resolution.
Okay, thanks, Gordon. Any questions for Gordon? Counselor Ellsworth?
Thank you for bringing this one. We've, we've asked multiple times to make sure, verify, and request, and triple verify that there will be a riverside trail with an easement dedicated to the city. That's happening, right?
So in, in the latest drawings, I've seen that. Now, we, over this sixty-day public hearing process, I'd anticipate you seeing those documents and being brought to you. So this just opens the hearing, and then you will have a final ordinance that'll be brought to you. And I would expect those questions would be answered to your satisfaction through that process.
Right. And I know this is about changing the boundary line. I'm just going to say that every possible meeting so that we cannot be misunderstood, this is important.
Yes, and I, I know Bill Pepperoni is actively watching this, and this, he, he brings it up in every meeting we have, so he's watching that closely.
Thanks, Gordon. Any other questions for Gordon? All right, thanks, Gordon. Any council discussion? All right, we will take a vote. Counselor Shipley, yes. Counselor Hoban is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple, yes. Counselor Ellsworth, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley, yes. So that passes five zero. All right, and another one.
I'm still here, sorry. I, I'll leave as soon as this is.
Oh, we like you, Gordon. An implied motion on an ordinance submitting Provo City Code to strengthen and expand the use of administrative citations. And this will be presented by Gordon Haight, and this is another one that we are opening for, you know, opening for public comment, which we will do after you talk.
Okay, so this, this ordinance came about as a result of violations up in the hillside. There was, the city has not been as effective in getting those taken care of. Some residents came and talked with the mayor. The mayor recognized the need to coordinate with a number of city departments to address some of the issues that are taking place. A task force was put together. Our new city manager was on that, is, I assume he's still on it. We haven't kicked him off, on the task force. And one of the things that this task force was to do was look at ordinances that needed to be changed to make us more effective and deal with the hillside. We've, the Development Services has previously brought an ordinance that had to deal with development on properties that were violation, and this is just another ordinance that we feel needs to be brought forward to help strengthen this. And so this ordinance specifically allows the city, right now, for violations up on the hillside, the most we can charge is twenty-five dollars per violation. This allows us, this raises it to a thousand dollars. And so we feel like this will help us in our effort to address some of the concerns and some of the things that have taken part in the hillside. And so the Hillside Task Force recommends approval of this. I do too, and we've gone with legal, and they've, Brian's team is one that really put this together and spent the time researching to make sure this, this works, and we're not breaking any laws to get this passed, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Gordon? Counselor Handley?
Well, as we, as I already said in the, in the work session, and I'm really glad to see this, and I hope that we can find ways to increase it by talking to state legislatures, as we talked about. I think that we really want to make sure these penalties are stiff.
Yeah.
Any questions for Gordon? All right, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Don't see anyone. All right, we will take a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Hoban is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple, yes. Counselor Ellsworth, yes. Counselor Fillmore? He's excused. Counselor Handley, yes. Counselor Shipley, yes. Thanks so much, Gordon. All right, an implied motion on ordinance amending the general plan to adopt the Provo Gateway standards, and this is a citywide application. It'll be presented by Jansen Tusher.
Thank you. Good to be with you this evening. So this proposed, these proposed standards are meant for the gateways that have been called out in the general plan, and this is a hopefully a streamlined effort to address all of those. Many, or some that have been identified already have old design corridors, and the purpose of this is to help streamline, to create, to create new design corridors as well as to update our, our previous ones. And we can go through it pretty quickly here. So here are the changes from the study session. So as was made, where we, we moved South State Street bordering Provo and Springville to tier one, and then there were some minor grammatic fixes. So as I was saying, the goal of the gateway standard is to, as it calls out in the general plan, is to maximize the aesthetic look of our gateways. And that is the goal of this plan. So, and it does it in several ways. One, it prioritizes, as we've talked about, in, in tiers from a tier one to a tier three, with tier one being the most important all the way to tier three. It gives some ideas for themes which can help a tribute to historic Provo and industries that have been important in the area, and identifies the current conditions. And the second, the big part of it is, as I was saying, is, is to help streamline future efforts by recommending a toolkit of sorts that we can take from to quickly create these new design corridors. And those six standards up there are, what's the bulk of this document? So here are the, the gateway locations as identified in the general plan. City staff, we proposed one additional one, which is thirty-seven hundred north. Okay, as I was saying, one of the biggest things that this plan does is to prioritize, and it does that by putting them into tiers. Tier one being the most prominent one, tier two being, you know, still important, not the most prominent, three being important but not highly used. And we as city staff using average daily traffic counts as well as potential redevelopment potential. daily traffic counts as well as potential redevelopment potential, development potential and population demographic data help to sort through these. Again, in section one, another thing that it introduces is some of the feedback that we got back from our technical working group as well as planning commission is introducing this idea of themes. As you, you enter in, now this isn't to say that all signs entering Provo are going to be different, wildly different from each other. But instead, it allows subtle elements to pay homage to whether it's historical or cultural or industrial influences been in those specific neighborhoods. And these is what we've come up with just as potential options as city staff through those. Also, as we can see, so we've, we've given some examples. One of the things that we pulled heavily from is the, the airport sign. And the kind of the universal like of the airport sign and that design as we can see in on the slide that these are the five tiers that have been designated as Tier One as selected by the technical working group and supported by the information that we looked at. With the addition of, of South State Street being added by the, by the council. Tier Two, these are the five that have been identified as Tier Two. And then here are the Tier Three. We also have Lakeview Parkway as we talked about. That's not currently a tier, just with the potential of it being used if there's ever a bridge going up or Utah Lake. But we decided that you're already in Provo when you're at Lakeview Parkway, so it doesn't really make sense to, to create another sign at this time. Now, section two of the gateway standards is the big bulk where we go through all the recommended standards. This is the toolkit that we like to say where we talk about the sign standards, which is obviously going to be the big thing that this, this plan kind of focuses on are those monument signs. And then we talk about landscaping standards, giving some tools and recommendations of water wise landscaping practices. We then talk about parking, where we like parking, buffer zones, pedestrian safe ways, something like that. Next, building appearances and setbacks, just making sure that in the area that we're using best practices, including safety for pedestrians, multimodal, safety standards, again, making sure there's logical connections safe pedestrian walkways. And then finally, the streetscape standards to help make the area as the general plan says more aesthetically pleasing. Section three, groups, the standards by tiers. This is where it mentions the the current conditions as well as some opportunities in the area and what are some current policies that are affecting them. And then section four is just the applicability. And then appendix A is just the landscaping, some resources that we've given instead of coming up with one comprehensive list of approved plans. Talking with the city forester, thought it was a good idea just to put them in the, the right direction. So went through that kind of quick, but I know your time is valuable. Any questions?
Thanks, Jansen. Any questions for Jansen? All right, thank you so much. All right, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I don't see any public comment. Council discussion. All right, we will call for a vote on the implied motion. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben is excused. That vote is five zero. Thank you, Jansen. All right, an implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately point six six acres of real property, property generally located at Three Ten South, Twenty Four Seventy West, from agricultural to residential ag. And approximately four point two four acres generally located at Three Fifty Eight South, Twenty Four Seventy West, from residential ag to ag. This is the Provo Bay area and it'll be presented by Aaron Ardmore, our planning supervisor.
Thank you, council. So this item has gone through staff review and the planning commission recommended approval on it as well. Staff's recommending approval as we see as kind of a cleanup, a zone change. You'll note in the staff report, there's no change in land use proposed. They are really just subdividing, they intend to subdivide the three residential lots on Twenty Four Seventy West off of the agricultural property behind them to the west. And to, to do that and to, to clean it all up, they would be having one parcel all in the agricultural zone to the west there and then the three parcels along Twenty Four Seventy into RA zone. We've, we've reviewed the standards of the lots, the, the, the three homes that are currently there and the lot width, depth, all those standards meet the proposed zone. So again, we're recommending approval. We think that this, this helps the the applicants as well as just kind of simplifying the zoning out there.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? All right, we'll open this item up for public comment. Anyone like to make public comment? All right, council discussion. Any discussion on this item? All right, we will take a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. So that vote is five zero. Next, we have an implied motion ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately point one eight acres of real property generally located at One Fifty Six West, Five Hundred South, from general downtown to in interim transit oriented development and author, authorizing a related development agreement. This is in the downtown neighborhood and it will be presented by Dustin Wright, a planner.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Yeah, so this item is one that the applicant is requesting to rezone these parcels here. They're landlocked currently. The zoning on them is the DT One Zone and they're requesting to, to rezone it to match the larger property that they own to the south there that's in the ITOD Zone. The reason they're requesting this is for an apartment building to be built on those three parcels. And so to make that work, we need them into one zone. And so they brought forth this rezone request for your consideration this evening. There was a mention of a development agreement and that was when they went to design review for the project. There was a discussion about pet amenity space on the property, which isn't in our code, but it was something that they were willing to put on this project. So that's part of the development agreement to make sure that that would be in there. And then the conceptual plan of the project is in the development agreement. And the planning commission is for a positive recommendation on this rezone. Might be happy to take any questions that you have.
Thanks, Dustin. Any questions for Dustin? All right, thank you. We will open this item up for public comment if there's anyone who wants to say anything. All right, council discussion. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we will take a vote. Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
So that vote is five zero. All right, an ordinance amending Prophecy Code to remove a step back requirement in the ITOD Zone. This is citywide application and it's presented by Dustin Wright, a planner.
Thank you. And so this item is one also brought forth by the applicant to be able to get that project to work in the ITOD Zone. There's a step back requirement that applies at the fifth story of a building to be stepped back fifteen feet. So their request is to have that removed from the, the ordinance for the ITOD area, which is shown here. So this is where it would be applicable. We've done it to the downtown DT One Zone, have the same type of step back removed except for in the historic district. And we haven't seen issues with that. So the step back will help benefit in providing more development potential on properties, especially on these infill development properties that our general plan identifies as areas where we want to build a, apply the right type of development in, in our city. And so this ordinance text amendment will help further that general plan goal as well. So staff is supportive of this and the planning commission is also for a positive recommendation as well.
Thanks, Dustin. And I know I was in the neighborhood meeting too and there was no opposition to it there either. All right, any questions for Dustin? All right, thanks, Dustin. We will open this item up for public comment if there's anyone who'd like to make public comment. All right, how about council discussion? We are just making this so easy. All right, let's vote on the implied motion. Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
And Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
That's five zero. Well, that is it. We are going to continue Development Services' request of an ordinance text amendment to chapter fifteen point twenty. That's landscaping requirement citywide. We're also going to continue Development Services' request for an ordinance text amendment adopting an agricultural tourism overlay. So those are both adjourned and if there's no objection, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent.